Oh, I guess I'd need the. All right. Good evening, everybody. This is the Wai'li Kahala Neighborhood Board number three, our monthly meeting, and thank you all for being present. We have a good turnout considering the stormy weather. So I'm glad we proceeded to go ahead. So like first of all, I want to introduce, I want everybody to introduce themselves.
Good evening, Sylvia Himeida, Subdistrict four.
Rich Durbin, Subdistrict three.
Christian DeCavato, Subdistrict three.
Aloha, Brian Wong, Subdistrict two.
Ali Gaston Gey, Subdistrict two.
Brian? And actually, please introduce yourself.
They can introduce themselves.
I'm Colin Kujiki, Subdistrict one.
Thank you, Colin. All right. Any other members?
Yeah, Peter Dutchen, Subdistrict four, on the way.
Very good. All right. Very good.
And Pedro Haro, Subdistrict one.
All right, great. Well, all right, we'll patiently wait for Peter and thank you for participating. So we have a quorum. That's great. And then we have some people in our audience, neighbors. Please come to the mic and introduce yourself just quickly.
Hi, my name is Kate Cagle and I'm on the board at the Kahala Beach Apartment Complex. And we had our meeting earlier this evening and I said, no, we've decided that Todd and I need to shoot over and listen to what's going on. And we saw the wedding agenda on here. Very interested.
Thank you for coming, Kate.
Yes.
Yeah, to follow up with Kate, my name is Todd Leong and I also serve on the Kahala Beach Association with the board with Kate.
Thank you for coming.
My name is Jim Nicolay and I'm a Kahala resident.
Thank you.
I am Kevin Wong, Subdistrict four.
So are you a member of Subdistrict four? Oh, I see, you're a resident from Subdistrict four. Okay, good, good. That's all right. That makes sense. Okay. All right. So those who are on WebEx, when you speak, please introduce yourself and we're happy you're participating. All right. So this meeting is called to order. And first, we have the, we have the reports from the first responders. Honolulu Fire Department, are you here? All right. Well, okay, we'll look for you later, Honolulu Fire Department. Honolulu Police Department, you're here? Okay, Honolulu Police Department not here yet. We'll look for you when you come. Board of Water Supply?
Good evening. I'm here. Yes.
Okay, great.
Hi, everybody. My name is Lorna Heller. I'm from the Board of Water Supply. I have a really fast announcement for this month. No main breaks to report for me. The only report I have is about protecting our water. And we encourage everybody to visit wwwboardofwatersupply.com forward slash protect Oahu water. Then that's where you can learn about the latest Board of Water Supply operational actions in response to the Red Hill crisis. And this would include weekly pumpage charts, recent drinking and monitor well test results, Board of Water Supply news and updates on just the Red Hill issues, water conservation tips and rebates, as well as Oahu's water history. That is all I have for this month's report. Does anybody have any questions?
All right. Any questions for Lauren, for board members?
I have one question.
Please go ahead, Christian.
Evening, Lorna. Thanks again so much for joining us. Is the Board of Water Supply still offering tax credits or incentives for water barrel storage or for rainwater barrels?
Oh, okay. So that one is actually, it's not like tax credit. We actually have like a rebate program going on for, for us at the Board of Water Supply. It's for $50 water barrels. Let's see, and it is $40 rebate that they are giving out for these rebates. I'm trying to think because sometimes we do have workshops for the rain barrels, but we haven't had, I think the next one won't be till maybe August. So it's going to be for a while. But yeah, so it is $40. Just you can go to Hardware Hawaii. They've got Sams Club. Sometimes I've seen it. City Mail, even online. I know people got it online through Sams Club. So if you got a plus membership, I think that's a pretty good deal. So again, $40 rebate or our classes, our workshops, which we do have, and those are $30 at that time. But those are recycled barrels, if you're interested in that one.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Lauren, from board members or from residents? Sylvia? No? Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Lorna.
Thank you. Drive safely. Stay dry.
Well, so far, so good. I mean, the rain's kind of stopped for now, but we will take your admonition to heart, Lorna. Thank you. Our reports of members' attendance at other meetings. Well, at this point in time, I want to throw a bouquet or a lay to Christian for doing a great job sharing the last meeting that I was not able to attend because of a personal commitment. So thank you, Christian, for doing that. Thank you. I, it's, I'm not deserving of that, of that compliment, but thank you. Okay. Any other, did any members attend other meetings that need to be reported? Okay, there being none, we'll move to the next item. Governor Josh Green's representative, I guess Michael Buck is not here, or is anybody else here to represent the governor? I don't know. Yeah, I'm trying to find his telephone number. Yeah, Anson, you have Mike Buck's telephone number?
No.
If you can get it for me, send it to me.
I can try and see if we can get it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because he, I mean, he was very good at attending the first few meetings and he hasn't been. So I, I thought I had his number and I was trying to call him, but I didn't have his number. So if you can get it over to me, that would, I'd appreciate it. Department of Transportation, Highway Division's representative, Casey Abbe. Casey, you're here? No, Casey? I know he's always here. Maybe he thought that's because of the... All right, good. We have somebody from the Fire Department. Okay. All right. You can just take the mic and go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry we're late. We just had a couple of calls and we made it, though. We made it. Okay, so last month's statistics are one structured fire, one brush fire, one cooking fire, and seven activated alarms. We also had 41 medical calls, two motor vehicle accidents, one ocean rescue, and one hazardous material call.
Busy.
We were a little busy. So you guys are going to appreciate this month's fire tip because we've talked about it a few times. It's Wildland Fire Awareness Prevention and Preparedness. Wildland fires significantly threaten Hawaii's landscapes, wildlife, and communities. With dry conditions and everyday activities contributing to the increased risk, it's crucial to take proactive measures to prevent and mitigate wildland fires. So some of the things we could do is lighten the load, reduce the fuels, and the possibility of ignition of your landscape by maintaining your yard and cleaning your gutters. Clear, cool, and contain. Clear vegetation 10 feet around campfires and barbecues. Keep a shovel and water nearby. Put them out cold before walking away. Watch the spark. Ensure machinery such as chainsaws and weed whackers and recreational vehicles with operating spark arresters are maintained regularly. You can learn more about these online, from these online resources. HFD is fire.honolulu.gov. Department of Emergency Management, honolulu.gov/DEM, and Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization at hwm-o.org/look.
All right. Okay. Very much, Captain. And any questions for Captain? I'm sorry, you're...
Hubert. Captain Hubert.
Yeah, any questions for Captain, for members of the board? Or let me ask you a question. For several months, we have tried to get Representative of Department of Land and Natural Resources over here to discuss the potential problem, fire hazard of Diamond Head. Right, okay. Nobody has come. I've gotten a couple of calls back. They're ghosting me. They're ghosting our neighborhood board. They don't want to come.
Well, we've talked about this a few times and that was one of, as I do think about it, what can we do? And that was one of my suggestions is you may have a little bit more clout than we do, but clearly that avenue has not helped too much. But I will take...
But I heard, you know, there was an article in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago that the Fire Department, Honolulu Fire Department, is truly concerned. And you folks are working on a plan. Can you give us, maybe we can forget about DLNR?
Well, I know DLNR was at Diamond Head recently and they were citing people that were not appropriately camping over there. And they also had a clear out, we saw. So they are taking some steps to help mitigate the situation. As far as the actual plan, I know we put out some PSAs regarding that. But as far as a structured plan, I could look into that for you, see if we can get something for you, but I don't have that with me at this.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that because you folks are the experts in the area. And I know that some of the residents have talked to me about, you know, fire breaks up on Diamond Head, really closely monitoring and trying to rid, rid Diamond Head of the illegal campers that could set fires. I mean, it's very, very scary. I mean, if something happens, I mean, oh my God. I mean, all of East Honolulu could be gone, you know?
Well, hopefully, hopefully, right.
Yeah, I know.
I know what you're saying. I appreciate what you're saying.
You know, like...
And we've talked about this the last few times that I've represented the department, but I will look into seeing if there is some sort of, yeah, I don't know if I can.
Plan. I mean, you folks are the experts.
Right.
You know, not the, not the DLNR people.
Right.
They have to really cooperate and depend on you. So I know you're, you know, you're aware of the potential problems. So if you can communicate with us and thankfully, we appreciate it. You're here every month. You know, that would be great.
Okay.
You're gonna be our eyes and ears.
Okay, I could do that for you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Anything else? Anything else from members of the board or... Okay, there being, oh, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Right. So again...
Want to come to the mic?
Speaking to the mic.
I'll be happy to give you my mic.
Sorry. I was there driving by for the cleanup. And there was so much stuff. If, say, Todd is living in Diamond Head and he has all of these things, do you take all of his stuff and get rid of it? Or what are they allowed to keep to then go back into the mountain?
So Honolulu Fire Department doesn't do the cleanup.
Right.
So I can't speak for another agency on how they remove all that stuff. But we drove by too. And yeah, you're right. There was a lot of stuff.
Yeah. Who would I find out and get that answer from, though?
I would, I would start with TLNR and see, you're right, if you can, if you can find out. Yeah. So I wish I could be more helpful. I'm not sure.
I believe they're not actually allowed to take their stuff because it's an illegal taking and therefore would require reimbursement, reconstitution for the loss suffered. And again, that's just a personal opinion. That's not legal advice at all. But I don't believe they're actually allowed to take unless it's actively hazardous, dangerous, or unable to move it with them at the time, I think was the confines of it. But that's why oftentimes we see a lot of them moving along with their, like, a lot of stuff, because those are all their belongings.
Thank you, Christian.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. ...
Thank you.
Greatly appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Have a great night. Thank you.
All right. So just asking, is the Honolulu Police Department here? Okay. All right. Not yet. And Casey Abbe is not here either. Okay. So what about Mayor Rick Legiardi's representative, Derek Mayashiro?
Oh, he still has not yet recovered. So you won't be able to make it tonight.
What did he have?
He had a heart attack.
Oh, my God.
But he, no, he's okay. He's just recovering right now. That's it.
Oh, my God. Okay. Well, wish him our best. Okay. We certainly appreciate his commitment to the Neighborhood Board. Councilmember Tommy Waters, do we have a representative? For, for Tommy Waters?
I also heard that through the email, Tommy Waters is not able to come tonight because of the, the weather.
Okay.
He sent me an email.
Okay. Okay. Any representative from Bert Kobiyashi? Okay. All right. Okay, not, not present. Any representative or from Mark Hashem, House District 18? Okay. And any representative or Senator Stanley Chang?
Yes, it's me. Hello. And I'm sorry in advance, I'm fighting a cold, so my voice is awful. But hello, Chair and members of the board. I'm going to put some links in the chat. First is our monthly district newsletter. Then another link is to sign up for our housing newsletter that we send out weekly. We often, we also have our office contact page. And just as a recap for the legislative session, there's 10 housing-related bills and 10 housing-related resolutions that pass out of both the Senate Housing Committee and the House Housing Committee. And our team is working on sharing that information over social media and also in next month's newsletter for everyone. And a message from the judiciary, there's some jury duty scams taking place right now. And we want to warn people that scammers may possibly target you. If you get a phone call regarding a warrant for failure to appear for jury duty, please hang up without responding to any of the questions or the prompts to press any numbers that the scammer may ask. If you also get an email that looks to be from the judiciary, but you did not email the judiciary first, don't click on any links or attachments and do not reply. Court staff or law enforcement generally do not call or email anyone regarding outstanding bench warrants related to jury duty. And all communication from the judiciary regarding jury services handled through the US mail, normally you fill out a questionnaire and you won't get any emails from them unless you called or emailed the judiciary first. And if you have any questions, you can contact Jan Kagahiro and I'll put her information in the chat.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Stanley Chang's representative? From board members? No. All right. Any questions for Stanley Chang's representative from our residents? Okay, there being none. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We go to the residents, community concerns. I know we have some community members here tonight who wish to speak. So now is your time. You have a mic?
Again, I love, my name is Kate Cagle. I'm on the board of the Kahala Beach Apartments.
Oh, this is her.
Go ahead.
Okay. We're just having difficulty with the amount of people on the beach. The, we can be out there at seven or eight o'clock in the morning and there are at least five different events going on. Of photographers. Some have their permits with them. Some get very upset with us that we ask for them. We have displays on the beach. Will You Marry Me? And all these candles. Now, they're the battery candles, but you're taking up beach space that someone could be sitting in or enjoying. Dogs not on leashes, of course, is another thing. But the weddings is the biggest thing. They've asked us to move. We're sitting there on the beach or we're sitting there on the grass and they ask if we would move so they could get a better shot for their photography. That's not good. We've had a couple of king tides in the last two years. We've had some big logs up and we've taken them down and put them on the edge of the, on the grass near the beach. And they will come over and pick them up and bring them over and put them on the grass so the family can sit there and take a family portrait. We have a coconut tree that is right outside our gate area of the pool. And the poor tree is falling down into the water. And they insist on sitting on the tree with as much, I've seen six people on it, or hanging on it to get the absolute picture of a lifetime. And it's very unfair. We put a sign up saying, this is a live tree. Please don't sit on me. And someone took it down. We don't own the beach, but it's part of our home. And we don't like seeing what's going on with the beach and the misuse of it and the non-responsibility of caring for it. There is a very limited kulianna that we see from people using this as a photography site. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Kate, let me just ask you a few questions.
Yes.
So how often, I mean, can you kind of quantify the number of weddings or photography events that are on Kahala Beach? And is it just weekends? Is it during the week? Or how often?
Every single day.
And...
You will see it going on.
Yeah. How many every single day would you, if you can quantify it or estimate it?
Close to the weekends is probably at least five a day that we see. I have 54 photographs on my phone that I thought, well, I wouldn't go and make large pictures, but I will if someone needs them. Like Representative Waters, I would like to show him, you know, the pictures of what, they come over on, there's a sidewalk and the beach is on this side, the Kahala Beach condos here. And they'll put their cameras, their cases or whatever. And we have to say, this is private property. Or they'll take some clothing and hang it on one of our trees. You know, you're approaching on private property. That's some of the issue that we have with it.
Well, I just, as Chair, I did call Council Chair Waters' office several times and I asked them to send me over a copy of the city council ordinance that was passed for the Waimea Ala beach problems. Too many weddings there. Because we did propose a resolution against the proliferation of weddings several meetings ago. But understandably, some of the Neighborhood Board members wanted to take a look, wanted to have a look, see at what had previously been passed by the city council with regard to the Waimea Ala weddings. Unfortunately, Chair Waters' office has not gotten back to me despite several requests to send me a copy of the ordinance. So perhaps you can put it, put pressure on them to either send it over to me, they have my email, or send it over to you so we can look and see what has been passed to protect Waimea Ala Beach and Kaileua Beach.
Well, and Lani Kai doesn't have weddings anymore either.
What's that?
Lani Kai hasn't, they got rid of the weddings.
Yeah, because...
Same as Waimea Ala.
Yeah.
May I interject?
I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm, I'm remote.
Oh, and, and who is this?
I have reviewed... Do, I'm sorry if you're getting feedback. I'm getting a bit.
Can you please introduce yourself to the group?
Christian.
I have reviewed in detail the wiki permit.
Oh, can you introduce yourself?
Okay. My name is Ron Green. My wife is Lisa Green. We live in the Kahala Apartments, condos, which I believe, ma'am, I guess that's where you also reside?
Yes.
Okay, Lisa, I can't hear.
Please go ahead.
And anyway, I'm having trouble hearing you. Hopefully, you're hearing me.
We can.
Okay. In reading the, all of the regulations required to obtain a wiki permit as a commercial photographer, they are in total violation. Okay. So it's not a matter of how do we, you know, get some legislation or ordinances to get them off the property. It's just a matter of telling them that they are in violation. And I am coordinating right now with a gentleman, I don't remember his last name, but he's a, he's a... His name is Vance and he's with enforcement with the land division. And the rule is, for these photographers, is that they are not allowed to go past the vegetation line. Okay? So the beach is where they belong. And their permit strictly says, or all of the ordinances with the, with the permit, say you cannot go past the vegetation line. And they, they just totally ignore that. They haven't read it. They don't care. They get the permit and they think they have carte blanche. They're also restricted. They cannot have any appliances, banners, signs, anything like that. Now, we've had them on the beach here, not on the beach, but above the, on the grass, in essence, where they're digging out the sand and they're planting signs, marry me. They have generators where they're powering various items. And it just goes on and on. And you try to tell them that you're in violation and they go, get away. I am working. Why are you yelling at me? You know, it's just, but the, the state, it's my understanding at this moment that the sidewalk running between Kahala Beach Apartments and the water, okay, is that the Kahala Beach property line is the center of the sidewalk. We are trying to verify that now with the, with Vance, who I mentioned earlier. The state will enforce if they in fact own the land from the sidewalk to the beach. Okay? That's their issue at this moment, that they don't know if they have jurisdiction because they haven't, they haven't looked it up. And that's surprising. But they pass a law and they go, well, it lies everywhere it's supposed to, but we don't know where it's supposed to. So they're, they're right now trying to ascertain if they in fact still own the beach property between the sidewalk and in the beach. Okay? Which is where we have the grass and the trees. And the trees, we're well aware of, they're falling, they're standing on them, they're jumping on them, they're doing all of that. So if, it's a matter that, no matter who owns the property, whether Kahala Beach Apartments owns the property or the state owns the property, and right now, I'm just going to limit it to those two, assuming it would be one of those. If the Kahala Beach owns the property, then we have the right to, you know, to say, get off of our property. If we don't own the property, the state has already stated in the issuance of the wiki permit that you are not allowed to go on that property. You must stay below the, the vegetation line. And it says, how do you, how do I know if I'm in the right place? It says, if you are between the beach and the veg, or the water and the vegetation line, you're in the correct place. Otherwise, you're not. So they are in clear violation. And it's just really who has a jurisdiction to, to enforce the permit. Where, again, we're told that within the next two weeks, that should be resolved.
All right. Well, that's good. All I can say is that if they are on the Kahala Beach Condos property, and I assume they are up until the vegetation line, then security for the Kahala Beach condos should tell them to get away, to walk.
Well, that's probably another issue. That's probably another issue, but it's, it's very plausible. I guess that would be up to the HOA committee, which, who, who I understand. You know, is very adamant about this whole issue to begin with. It's my, you know, again, it, it's just a matter of who, who is responsible or who has the responsibility. Or the
Yeah.
Authority to tell them to get off. But it's really, it's really bad. It's, it's, it's worse than it has even been described.
Okay, well, at any event, let's say this, that if it is on the Kahala Beach condo property, then. Security for the Kahala Beach condo should tell them to get off or they're going to call the police.
Yeah.
And trespass charges. I mean, if it's state property, if it's beyond the, the vegetation line. Then it's probably DLNR and it's just gentleman Vance.
Exactly, Vance, exactly.
Come down and tell them to leave.
Exactly. So I, I'm, I'm hopeful that within the next two weeks, we'll have some resolution on that. And, and, you know, I'm not opposed to setting up sprinklers and turning them on at the appropriate moment, you know? It doesn't, it won't bother me at all.
Well, that's beyond the neighborhood board's jurisdiction. But in any event, we, we, why don't you stay because this item is on the agenda? And we do have the Director of the Wedding Association of Hawaii. Who's supposed to be here in another ten or fifteen minutes. So she'll give her side of the story. So I think it'd be useful for you folks to stay around.
Yeah, yeah, we're online here, so.
Please go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, just, just to add, my name is Todd Niang. I'm, I serve on our association board with Kate. A few things to add too is if you compare us with other shorelines where these services are, are banned. Lani Kai, Waimea Nalo, if you come to look at physically in front of our development from Wildlife Country Club to the hotel. You can tell that there's actually a receding shoreline. So there is a bottleneck when we have people coming through. And you can imagine maybe some heated exchange, exchanges between the people who are working, doing photography, the families, and then our residents. Our residents are, are Ohana's, you know, we're the older segment. And we do have, we are concerned, some of the interactions have been pretty heated, have been reported to us. So there is some safety issues with, you know, our shorelines being very tight. And we're not sure why they don't continue over to the resort area. It's a much bigger area. I'm assuming a lot of the photographers or the wedding event planners, they don't know that they're allowed to use it. So.
They don't want to pay the money for it to the
Well, no, it's public land, so they are allowed to take, take photos and whatnot. But our little passage is getting quite narrow. And so there is sort of a, maybe a safety issue with the erosion, you know, mother nature, we can't stop it, but. That's something to think about as well. Yeah. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We'll stay here because it's on the agenda.
Hey, Rich, just real quick. I mean, I think we are waiting for the. How's it going? I think we're waiting for the, the wedding photographer people, I think, you know, and. I would like to, you know, recommend that you guys kind of hold your breath until that person comes here because you're just going to say the same things over again. So it would, it would make sense just to, you know, I, I think we all understand the concerns. I had a brief discussion with the, the person last month that we hear and, you know, I understand her point of view, right? I think it's not necessarily. The law-abiding people that are the ones that are, like, the people that are probably encroaching are. Non-permitted, non, like, I think the issue is the enforcement versus the actual system, right? I think we, I, I think, you know, there's a lot of good local photographers that, that do make an income on this. And unfortunately, we have been gotten an increase of, of photographers here because of the, like you said, there's this just really ban on photography in Waimea Nalo and Lani Kai, which is. Ridiculous because it is state property, I think, with appropriate, with appropriate permitting and whatnot is, is appropriate, you know, it should be enforced, right? I think that the, the problem is we don't know who the enforcement is. My, I understand your representative Stanley Chang for your neighborhoods. I would recommend, you know. Emailing him your concerns. It's unfortunate, you know, and within, I think Ken's, you know, rant, he was the representative left. So it's, it's, uh. Yeah, but I, I think that was recommending him. The other thing I would recommend is like, you know, your sidewalk is probably going to be a non-conforming sidewalk very soon. So I would feel like very tread very lightly on utilizing your sidewalk as your boundary because like you said, your beach erosion. Pretty soon that sidewalk's going to be non-conforming and you would have to probably remove it. So. Just tread lightly with using the sidewalk. I mean, it's a non-conforming structure on a, on a, on oceanfront, right? I mean, it is now fronting the sand. It is now retaining the sand. It's a non-conforming structure. So just tread lightly on that area. Yeah, so that's, that's my suggestion. But again, like, let's, I would just suggest holding off until your, the, the juxtaposition is out, out here. And I definitely understand her concerns. I think, you know, there's very many good local, you know, Karen people that, that are respectful of every process there. And I think it's unfortunate that there's a lot of violators. And it's, it's the enforcement, not the.
Thank you, Colin.
I'd like to jump on this for a quick second. I'm sorry to hear that this is happening to you guys. It sounds like it takes a lot out of your day-to-day life. I'm very sorry that you go through that. You know, obviously that's not why any of us want to live in this neighborhood at all. In terms of sort of the tree on your property, coconut palms get very expensive. Generally, they're about a thousand dollars per square foot. So if that tree is thirty thou, or thirty feet, then you're looking at thirty thousand dollar replacement costs. Numbers like that can scare away people who are insistent on purchasing because the tree comes from your property, I'm assuming. Oh, it's, oh, okay. So, okay, I apologize. I thought it was growing over. Yeah, yeah. But either way, I'm sorry that you guys are going through that and, you know, hopefully we can come up with a, a good middle ground this evening.
No, we, we agree. I mean, we know it's hard.
All right, very, well, stay, please stay because we're supposed to having, having the wedding person here in charge of the wedding association. So any other residents' concerns other than, yeah, please go ahead, Jim? Jim Nicolai or?
Yes.
Introduce him.
That's right. For everyone who's listening remotely, my name is Jim Nicolai. I'm a resident of Kaiala Olu Place and I'm here on behalf of the neighbors on the street. And we're asking for the Neighborhoods Board action to report some non-conforming construction to DPP. I'm going to hand out some pictures to people here. The house at nine four nine Kaiala Olu Place has, has erected. A fence approximately thirty feet tall at the rear boundary of their, of their property. The contractor says that they have a permit for it. There's no permit on file for a thirty-foot fence. You can see from the, the photo that it's a, it's a rather large, large structure. And it's visible not only from the street, but from Wildlife Golf Course and from the houses on the other side of the golf course. The concern is not only that this fence has been put up. But they've also installed the metal bases and the concrete footings across the entire golf frontage along the canal of the property. Which would make it possible to. Continue the, the fence across the entire frontage. So. Residents have called, called DPP previously about this issue, didn't get any response. But when this Neighborhood Board wrote or called DPP, they did send out a letter. And we would like to ask this board to again complain to DPP because it does appear that a fence. Five times as tall as what is permitted has been installed without a permit. Thank you very much.
I would like to point out that I've seen the, the fence myself from the opposite side of the canal as well as near Mr. Nicolai's house. And it is large, it's gross, it matches nothing in the neighborhood. It serves no purpose than to, in my opinion, cover someone's ass who built a marble building with large glass windows right next to a golf's. A golf course. So, you know, your building materials, your choice, your property, your choice. But unfortunately, we have restrictions that should be obeyed and conform to the surrounding area. And this house clearly does not do that. I would also like to point out that this is the fifth or sixth time that you've come in on this concern. All right, let's go with third because I like it because it sounds more dramatic. This is the third time he's been in here, asking for some sort of relief with DLNR. And, you know, it's, it's kind of ridiculous that we've got to this point. So whatever we can do to help Mr. Nicolai get this fence torn down, please, let's just go ahead and do it and write DLNR a letter or whatever.
So Jim, we previously sent a letter on this. I'm sorry, my. About one year ago. So Anson, can we do, can I send a letter and to DPP? It's DPP, Department of Planning and Permitting. Okay.
Yeah, we would have to vote to, to give you that power.
And I mean, do we have to have this on the agenda to vote on it?
I propose that we write a letter.
Okay.
Can I have a second?
I second it.
I'll second. Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Do we have a opposition?
Nope.
No, okay.
I said hi.
All right, good. All right, so I'll send a letter and just say we previously, previously sent a letter and please, you know, take some action on this, okay?
So it looks like the, the gentleman that owns the property, his name is Sung Wook Choi. If you'd like to.
We cannot, you know, we cannot get involved in disputes between residents.
Sure. I mean, it's just public information. He owns the property.
Thank you, Colin.
Sung Wook Choi.
But all we can do is, you know, deal with the city or the state agency, you know, that's our, you know, that, you know, that's our calling card.
It's just a fact.
All right, good. Thank.
Rich, Rich. Do we CC that to DLNR?
Yeah, I guess so, but I don't think the DLNR has any jurisdiction over it because.
Who owns the canal?
Oh, well, it's, I guess it is. I guess DLNR does own the canal. So it is on the canal. But it's under property, so it's really, I can CC DLNR. Okay.
Pedro, go ahead.
No, just, just to be able to, to escalate as Christian was, was asking for. Could we at least CC the appropriate representative in Stanley Chang?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we can do that too. Yeah, yeah. CC Stanley Chang and.
And then that way, when we hear nothing back.
And I
And Tommy Waters.
Tommy Waters.
Waters, yeah. But if one of them takes an interest, hopefully that they can make them respond.
Yeah, and Mark Asham and Eric Kobayashi.
I, I don't think that's their district though.
Yeah, I mean, more the merrier.
President Biden, you know, this is going for it.
Well, I think I'll leave Governor Breed off of this. All right, all right. So now.
So would you say the motion is to write a letter in regards to a fence to DPP or is that okay?
Yeah, so, yeah, so Chair will send a letter regarding. Regarding that, you know, fence that is three or four times, I guess, you know, what's. Under what's, what's permitted under the appropriate regulation. Oh, all right, so we'll go moving right along here. We'll go to.
Pedro, did you have something else, Pedro?
I'm sorry. Pedro, you have something to say?
No, no, I didn't.
Okay. All right, so we'll move to the board business. That's okay. I mean, approval of the Thursday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes. This is the meeting, meeting that Christian was chair. And I heard from proper authorities that the minutes are perfect, you know? No changes, no modifications. So that's, that's, that's great. Good job, Christian. Okay, and Anson. Okay, so the Chair will recognize a, a motion to approve the minutes for the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes. Sylvia, you so moved. We have a second? Okay, all right, we got, we have a couple of seconds. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, that's great. All right, so as far as the one thousand one-time fund for outreach. Kahala Mall, I guess will not be the venue. I guess we'll move that along, Brian, I guess.
The venue, yeah, I think we, we need to just revisit that at another time. But the, the thousand dollars to buy the materials that we had been interested in. Anson, I, I might need your assistance to help tap on Jackson. Callie to see where that is.
Yeah, we have all your, it was the first aid kits, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, we have those already. We're just waiting for your guys to decide on what location you want to have it at.
Okay. Okay, good. At least we got those. So we'll, we'll figure out where we'll have our little informational session. Thanks. That's, that's all we got there, Rich.
Yeah, right. I'd just say, I mean, I guess Kahala Mall doesn't want to, doesn't want to host us. I did go to. Yeah, I did go to a Kahala Mall event last Friday, the, the, yeah, the SIP and shop event. It was great. I mean, it was, I mean, Bob's there. And it was, they did a very good job, but if they're not going to, if they're not going to host the Neighborhood Board, so be it. But across the street, I mean, at the Koala Market, you know? You know, the Kahala Market Food Land, I mean, that is so busy. I, if they would do it, and they might, because we've helped them out, you know, in the, you know, in the past. And they've come before the board many times.
I did reach out as well, but there was no response.
Oh, okay. All right.
Called and emailed and there was no response.
Doesn't seem to be interested. Okay. Okay, well, thank you for trying. All right, so we'll move this along and if, if you folks, you know, can work on it. And we should be able to find somebody willing to do that, willing to host us. Okay, so we'll go to the, the next item, you know, the moving venue of Neighborhood Board number three to Wilson Elementary School. Anson, you were going to check on that? Any, any possibility?
Oh, yes. So we did talk to Wilson Elementary School. They said they can host us, but due to summer school, they cannot at that moment. But because they need to find a custodian for that, for that time. But they said they can, but they just need to talk to us again. We're just waiting for updates. And we also, if I remember, we also looked at other locations and they are still, we're still waiting updates for those also. So we, we did look at KCC and, Colin, what was your suggestion?
Okay, well, I mean, KCC would be great. I mean, if we could do that, that would be a big score. And, but thank you, Anson, if you could just keep on.
Rich, just suggestion, we are going to recess next month?
Well, we have to decide, you know, this, Anson brought that up.
July or June or July?
Well, you know, I think.
Put your, pick up your mic.
You've got a better, better memory than me. I thought we were going to do it in August. Anson mentioned that we can take three recesses during a year. So we always take December off and then we use. So we always take December off and then we usually take August off. But, you know, that's not, you know, that's not embedded in stone.
Pick up your mic.
Technically, we can take both June and August off. But it's kind of up to the board. I don't want.
Sure. I mean, I, I think, you know, maybe we just say we're going to go to Wilson because we're going to have a recess and post recess. We can go back. School will be back in session in August. Anson really knows the school schedule.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I think, like, trying to find a place next month when we're not quite there yet and then we're going to go to recess and then we're back.
Something in favor.
We might as well just vote for Wilson.
This is, you know, I'm thinking, you know, the, you know, the Alaway Clubhouse is not so bad. I mean, it's, you know, we can do it here. It's a longer drive for the residents. But Anson, it's not that Wilson can put us up willy nilly next month, is it? They haven't responded to us. So I think until, you know, I'd rather, I think we'd all rather just have a permanent locale. I mean, if Wilson or KCC could put us up on a permanent basis. Yeah, that would be great.
Shaman wants to. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, you know, I can hear. I'm sorry, who is this?
I'm from Shama University, representing Shamanat. I was wondering if, if you guys are looking for a place, Shama is available if you guys don't mind coming up the hill a little bit.
Well, Shamanat would be great, but I mean, do we have to?
Not a district.
I guess one of the problems is do you need to have the, you know, the city give you an indemnification? Because I think that's been the sticking point in the Blangiardi administration. You know, they, they don't want to give indemnifications just in case, you know, somebody trips and falls or, you know, going to the Shamanat, you know, meeting locale. It'd be great meeting in Shamanat. Shamanat is a wonderful location, but.
It's not our district.
Do it and, and without a city indemnification?
No.
Not that you really need it anyway. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's really, you know, nine hundred, nine hundred and ninety-nine times out of a thousand unnecessary. Anson, do you want to, I'm sorry. You are, sir, from Shamanat. I didn't catch your name.
Koholi. I think I spoke on the neighborhood board meeting a month or so ago.
You did. Yes, I remember. Yeah. Would Shamanat be willing to host us? That'd be terrific.
I mean, if, if you guys are really looking for a place, I'd be more than willing to open up one of our larger conference rooms. And then we have IT capabilities too for the Zoom or the online meetings as well.
Yeah, Colin mentioned and is correct. It's not exactly in our, it's an actually Kama Key. That's Kama Key's neighborhood board. You know, it's not Kahala Neighborhood Board. Yes, I'm sorry. You're right. St. Louis Heights, East Diamond Head and what's the third? Kapahulu. Yeah.
Yeah, Richard, as, as much as appreciate the offer and it's probably a great venue, I feel the same way that if we're to change a locale from where we are now, it should be somewhere centered in our district. I like Kahala area. Yes.
Yeah. So, yeah, Yli Kahala, Wilson Elementary School would be in Yli Kahala and KCC would be in Yli Kahala, but not, not Shamanat as much, as much as we appreciate your suggestion. Thank you.
Rich, I guess I would just like to motion that we move it to Wilson in August, if that's available at this point, because it feels like we've just been kicking this can down the road for
Okay.
multiple months at this point. And if we're going to continue to kick it down the road.
We're supposed to take our, our.
It's on our agenda.
Yeah, I mean, I think right now August was the month we were going to have our recess.
We haven't decided yet.
Yes, we have, well, okay. I forget. I thought it was, I thought we did. All right. Well, August or September, maybe. Okay.
Unless we find something else and Anson finds something else in the meantime, I think we should, I would, I would like just motion to go to Wilson Elementary. In finding something else at, at the next available time. If there's something else more readily available that is within our district, I am open to.
Is, okay, so Colin makes the motion. Do we? We have a second? Okay. Lee has a second. Okay. All right, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, any nays? I guess it passes unanimously. So Anson, why don't you let us know? Yeah, whether we can move it. Okay. All right. Okay, good. Right, right. Okay, so.
Can I point out that in the chat, they sent somebody, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't take a look at the name. But Ron and Lisa Green sent the city council bill ordinance about Wyman Hollow.
Yeah. Oh, bro, yeah, I had, I had called Tommy Waters' office a couple of times to try to get that. I will, you know, I'll do that again. I mean, I'll do that again.
What I'm saying is, is that it was posted in the chat. Somebody, Ron and Lisa Green found the link to the appropriate.
Oh, cool.
And provided it in the chat. So, so we should have access to it now.
Oh, great. Okay, okay. Good, good. So it's the chat for this meeting.
Yeah. So could we include that in the minutes?
Okay.
I can email it to you, Chair, also.
Yeah, Anson, if you could email it to me. I'm not the most digitally proficient person. Be great. Okay, good. Thank you, Pitt. That's good. All right, now. Okay, so now, actually, presentation's new business. So do we have? We were supposed to have Tessa, Tessa, are you here? Oh, good. Please come forward. Okay. Hi, Tessa. Okay, nice to meet you. So introduce yourself.
I think I'm loud enough, right?
Okay.
Hi, good evening. I am Tessa Gomes. I am a wedding planner and I am the current president of the Oahu Wedding Association. Hi, nice to meet everybody. And so I guess what I'm here today to talk about is the resolution about weddings and limiting weddings on the beaches on Yli. Right?
Did you hear the prior?
I did, and I just got here. I came from an event. Yeah.
It's going to be a little bit repetitive because we have, we have residents here from the Kahala Beach condos.
Perfect.
So we've already had.
I'm sorry that I missed that part. Yeah. So, okay, so I guess, you know, to just kind of give everybody a high level of, of why I'm here is just to kind of explain to everyone where we are as an organization. You know, the Oahu Wedding Association represents about 160 small businesses, right? And we are everywhere from officiants to wedding planners, to photographers, to, you know, everything in between, florists, whatnot. What we are, what our stance is as an organization is we, we believe that bans are not effective or bans are not the answer. Enforcement is something that we all believe in. So we all do think that there does need to be enforcement. We have had several talks and we're working with Director Thielen from the Parks and Recreation. So working with her on what that looks like, you know, with Wyman Hollow when they did there, I'm sorry, I can't see everyone. I'm trying to look at you guys too. When we, when we spoke with Director Thielen, you know, we talked about Bill 38 and how Wyman Hollow has that ban. And in Kailea and North Shore, they have their bans. What's happening, as you can see, is when you create these bans, it forces people to move to different areas. The hard thing with that is once we start doing that, you start to create this, this bottleneck of all of the businesses in different areas. And I, I'm born and raised here. I grew up in Hoi Kai. You know, when we were growing up, all of our, our photos, my family photos were at Wyman Hollow Beach. Right? With the ban in Bill 38, if you're aware, it's not a wedding ban. It's commercial activity, so commercial film. So it's not just weddings that you're banning. It's banning baby photos, graduation. Again, my family photos. So this is the first year where my family, we ended up going to Kahala Hotel. And we did our family photos there where, you know, I have a 13-year-old daughter. Like, we have always done it consistently at the beach because that's what I did growing up. And so it bans that too. So we really do believe that finding a way, finding a solution with the city and the state, because the tricky thing with Yli is you have city. And then once you walk onto the, the sand, then it's state. So trying to find that connection between all of them is really important. So it's funny because I'm on another board for the state. And I'm working with the state to try to connect with the city to figure out what is that solution? How do we come together versus just banning? How do we find a way to possibly increase fees to allow more enforcement? We do believe that there should be enforcement. People, we shouldn't go to the beach. There shouldn't be 20 weddings happening at one time. I think we all agree with that. There shouldn't be anything happening in abundance. People, families should be able to go to the beach, enjoy it. But it's also understanding that these families are supporting their own families through activities, right? Again, can we find a way to find that balance? I don't think that a ban with everything makes the most sense. So really understanding that, that working with the community is something that we really believe strongly with versus an us against them, right? Really trying to figure out how to make this work for everybody. So we can, again, take our family photos at the beach. We can still have a ceremony. You know, a lot of the couples that I've spoken to don't have the money to do a huge wedding. They've grown up in Hawaii. They want to just have a small, simple ceremony at the beach and now they can't do that. So how do we find that balance of allowing residents, allowing people to do that? And also allowing people that live in the community to have their, their privacy as well. And I think that's where we are. So what I'm asking is, I know that there's a resolution. If we can pause it and allow us to continue working. So we have actively been working with the city. We've actively been working with the state to find a way to come together with them and with the community to figure out how we can find out a way that we could all move forward together. Sure.
So let me just ask you. So apparently the resolution that the, or the ordinance that the city council passed for Wyman Hollow Beach was just kind of sent over to us. Pedro saw that it came over on the chat. How is that ordinance? I haven't looked at it yet.
So here's the interesting thing about it. Is it, it was, it's a complete ban on commercial activity. So it doesn't say anything about weddings. It's commercial film. The reason for that is they were like, and it's interesting. So we had a meeting with the mayor. We talked to him because he signed the, the ordinance with a memo to Tommy Waters saying, my goal is to repeal this because what I want to do, he's like, but I want to show them that I'm serious. But what I want to do is find an island-wide solution for all beaches. I think what he realized is that's a bigger fish than what he, what, it's a bigger chunk than what he realized. So I think, you know, in talking to the Parks Department, we realized that every beach is different. It's in an ideal world for enforcement, having one rule for everything would make it so much easier for, for the police. What they've realized is it's, it's impossible. So they're trying to figure out, they've, they've scrapped the bill that was on the table for an island-wide enforcement, reduction of activity, because they're like, how do we do it if, you know, Kahala is a lot busier than, I don't know, around the beach that no one goes to versus, you know, Alamoana Beach Park versus, you know, Wyman Hollow. So how do we, how do we make it even, right? And so we have had several conversations. We've, we've polled a lot of photographers, so not just wedding photographers, but again, commercial film, because they allow commercial film, right? Hollywood, they can be there too. So we filmed a lot of, or we, we polled a lot of people to say, how do we make this work? What's fair? If we were to say we have to reduce, if we have to do less, what's fair? When do you shoot? Is it daytime? Is it evening? Sunsets, whatnot? So we did a lot of this survey. We're just, right now, we're working with them where they're like, okay, well, what's the solution? For us, everyone's like, it's enforcement. We have to figure out how to enforce. For me, as a, as a community member, as someone as OWA, I'm like, we are not the enforcers. So how do we, sorry, am I talking over someone?
Let Tessa continue and then you folks can weigh in. Okay?
May I ask a question?
Not right now. Let Tessa finish her presentation.
Okay.
Finish it up in a minute.
And then I'll answer questions.
You'll have your time, sir, to ask questions.
Perfect. Okay, so what was I saying? Anyway, so again, our, our goal is to, is we're still working with the city. We have, again, met with Director Thielen several times. We've met with the mayor. We're just trying to figure out, because they've come to us and said, well, what's reasonable for you? What's fair for you? For us to just say enforcement is the solution, I don't feel like we're giving them anything that we're doing on our end. So we're really trying to figure out on our side, what is fair? What do we want? What can we live with as, again, people that all live here, we're residents, born and raised. But also, we, this is where we work, right? We work in Hawaii. How do we make it balanced? And so that's kind of where we are. We have been meeting with them. We are continuously meeting with them. Again, their first round didn't work in terms of that, that island-wide bill. And so now we kind of went back to the drawing board to figure out what's next.
So I just, we just have some questions that the board wants to ask before you do, sir. So do you have a proposed ordinance that we can look at and, you know, kind of analyze and?
Not yet. So. Not yet, only because it, the one that we had proposed. Again, what I, what I love about Director Thielen is she is honest and blunt. And she's like, that's not going to work. That's stupid. She didn't say stupid, but again, it, we, we tried. We had some ideas and she was like, listen, this is not going to fly with the community. This is not going to work for them. So go back and think about it again. So we, we sent one to her, again, and I appreciate.
Who's her?
Director Thielen, I'm sorry. So she's the director of Parks and Recreation. So we thought if we can work together to present it to city council and to the mayor, it will make a lot more sense than us as an organization just saying, this is what we want.
So when do you think it might be ready?
I mean, I'm hoping in the next couple of months.
Okay.
You know, shortly. I'm hoping. I know it's been working for a while though. I mean, but I'm, I'm optimistic.
Any other questions from board members for Tessa? She didn't go ahead. Now, Colin? All right, Colin.
Yeah, yeah. I have a question.
Well, no, we're going to have. The way we. The way we work these meetings is the board members question first and then the residents. Okay? So if you can just be a little bit patient, we'll get to you very soon. Go, please go ahead.
Okay, is it working? Okay. You know, I have a problem with this enforcement area.
Sure.
The way you're going about it, because it's kind of like trying to stop speeding. I don't know who's going to enforce. Right now, from what I hear, a lot of people don't even know who to call to enforce this issue. So I recommend you start looking at a little bit more self-enforcement. How can you maybe send somebody out? Check out permits, just check out what they're doing on a sporadic basis. That way you can offer something to the city and maybe get rid of the problem altogether where you're not relying on the city enforcement.
Sure. And that's a good point. And I think so, kind of going back to what I was saying earlier about the city and the state. The confusing thing is a lot of people that are working on the beach feel like they are following the rules because they said they can pull it up. It's online. They can see who approved or who got permits. That is through the state. So again, it's tricky because if you go to, you know, Yli Beach Park, the grassy area is city-county. Once you hit the sand, then it's state. So a lot of people are saying, okay, well, we pulled our permit, but it's technically not even the right one. Like for city and county, you can't see who pulled a permit. It's all by mail or in person. The Wiki permits are, are state and that is online. So you can see that. So what I'm trying to work on is, again, getting city and state together to say, how do we have it more transparent? Because we can't self-regulate because we don't know at this point who has pulled a permit. So that's why it's almost taking a step back to say, how do we fix the first step? Because if we can see who is and who's not, and or honestly, nobody wants to do a wedding with 10 weddings there. If we see there's a bunch, like, they will go somewhere else to make it a little more even. But without knowing, without the full transparency from city and county, it makes it a lot harder for us to, to monitor and regulate. But that is absolutely something that I think is a great idea if we can get that. And that's why I'm working on kind of hurdling both sides to hopefully pull them together. Maybe a pipe dream, but I hope so.
All right, Colin.
I hope your sex was successful in that.
Thank you so much.
Because otherwise it's a black and white type situation.
Exactly. No, I, I agree with you.
Colin, you got a question?
Yeah, I appreciate you coming in here. I mean, I totally understand. I, I mean, I have taken photos on the beach and I've attended many a wedding. I, I mean, I have taken photos on the beach and I've attended many a wedding with my friends on the beach. But do you know, like, how many permits are allowed per day? I, I mean, I, I just understanding what that, 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 you know, that'll help, given you guys, right? I mean, understanding like what, what is the capacity that you guys think that they're, that that there legally is right now? What do you think the right capacity is?
So there's two answers. So there's city and county and state. Through the state, it's the Wiki permit and it's unlimited. So you can get an unlimited amount of permits on that day for weddings. Again, it's one of those things where then city and county, it's a case by case. So they could approve one, they could approve ten, like, we don't know that, like that. The city and county side is completely unknown. On the state side, again, you know, we have talked to them about enforcement and understanding that, you know, is there too many? And again, so for us, it's, so here's the confusing thing, so hold, stick with me. Through the bills, through city and county, they are trying to limit the commercial film. Because if you start touching weddings, and I think I'm a little unclear on this, but it becomes a, you can't legally stop weddings. It's, it becomes a religious protected thing.
I guess.
I think, I think, so, so that's why they say commercial film. But this Wiki permit through the state is saying weddings, which is why it's an unlimited. So the state and city are running two different platforms of approval and for two different things. So the, the state is saying it's a Wiki permit for weddings. For the city, it's for commercial film. To throw things even more confusing, through the state, you also have the film, the film permits too. And that is another permit that you can get in due of the Wiki permit.
I mean, it sounds like the Wiki permit is not really, is not for you guys anyways, it sounds like.
Well, the Wiki permit was created specifically for weddings for the state. So again, anything on the, 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 the sand, that state is, is Wiki permit. And so again, in theory, you could have a hundred weddings. What I'm, what I'm saying is, there's no company that would want to have a hundred weddings happening at the same time. Like, if I'm getting married.
Why aren't you guys pushing to limit?
Because the state, for us right now, it's the city that has the bills and and all the the ordinances that are that are coming out, not the state. So right now, again, it's, it's one step at a time, like in, I'm sorry.
That's D L N R that approves a Wiki permit? For the state? Okay, good.
Yes.
So Christian, you have a question, and we'll get to the gentleman and the resident.
I think Colin had a, a part.
You have.
So I mean, I guess, when, you know, the, the second question I asked is like, what is the, I, I think unlimited amount of weddings regardless is, I mean, I think it's just like camping, like you should have. Amount of permits per day.
And for us, we're like, why can't we do it like camping? Like, we've said that, because camping is city and county.
That's what city and county does, I mean, that's the understanding from city and county permits for weddings anyways. Because like, when I've attended weddings at the Wailei Beach Park, is that you have really have to has, have that parks and rock permit. And there's only a certain amount done per day, there's two per day per site, right? I think that's, that's it.
And so, again, like, I think we've, we've talked to the mayor about that too, and Director Thulin, like, you guys have a permitting system online for, for camping. And for like the summer school that my daughter's, like, so like, why, so again, it's one of those things where. We're trying to be part of the solution versus just saying, here's all the problems wrong with you, right? Like, so for me, I'm like, what can we do to help? It's trying to think of other ways and trying to work with them. But again, for, like, if that could happen, that's the dream for all of us, honestly.
What is the right number for you guys?
So I think that's, that, I wish there was one number. I think when we're talking about different venues, right, we were saying Wailei Beach Park versus, right, we kind of surveyed Alamoana versus, uh, Waianalo. It's also for us, is it per time?
We, we have like Kahala is our.
You're like.
That's our cool Yana, we don't care about Alamoana.
So that's, I wish I had a number, I don't know off the top of my head. Again, like, for me, my fear is, I'm, I don't want to speak on behalf of everyone. But we did poll about a hundred fifty photographers, so I do have that information that we've shared with Director Thulin. I'm happy to share it with you guys too, of what would be an appropriate number? What would be an appropriate fee that we would want to pay that we think is fair for commercial film? And so I'm happy to share that with the, with the board, you know, at a later time as too.
I mean, I think that's understanding that and like what your stance, like having a better understanding of what your stance is would definitely help your argument. But at this point, like, you have a blanket, hey, hold on. We understand that we've ruined every other beach and now we've bottled next to your beach? And you're like, just hold on, deal with it, that doesn't sit well with me.
That's fair.
Right? It's like, I, I would appreciate you coming and having this discussion, like you understood you're coming here, having to understand facts.
Sure.
What a plan was, it's a much better place, like, and to me, I would still want to vote on this resolution that we would want to ban it until you figure that out.
Sure.
Yeah.
Right? And I think because at this point, you're, like you said, we are the brunt of the work now. Because every other district has already done this, because you have been unable to do that type of register, but regulation. By yourself and lobbying really for everywhere else.
Right.
Right now, you're really impacted.
Right.
Like, I have been to the beach, I've had photographers literally stepped on my daughter's sandcastle while she's building it.
Hmm.
And like, and I was like, where's your permit? And they're like, oh, hold on, I'll get it, and they leave. And like, and that film that he produced is now a music video. Literally, like, with my daughter's, like, hand, like, my sand toys in it. And it's like, it is a commercial video, he was making money on it, it's a, it's a, it's a artist that's making money.
Was it a wedding or was it?
It was a music video.
A music video.
Now shown like as a commercial music video.
Right.
But they're, you know, with a guy with an album, you know, like, it's a legitimate, like, guys may, did not follow the appropriate procedures. But at this point, it's like, we are now the brunt of it, because you are unable to do that kind of same thing, the same, you know, I, and I totally, I totally get it.
Right.
Trying to like fight you on this.
No, I understand, I completely understand. And like I said, when I go to the beach, right?
Trying to figure it out still, hold on.
Right.
Probably not gonna pass this legislative session, it's probably not gonna pass the next one. What we can do is like, we want to pass something now, because it's true, impacting us right now.
Right, I understand that.
And so like, I, I guess that's my point of view, and I would still like.
Colin's daughter would like, she should get the residuals.
No, it was, it was really, yeah. Yeah, like, my sand toys should get the residuals on it.
Absolutely, they should, they should.
Well, that's a very good point, I think.
Right.
That's, that's what I understand, and thank you very much. And like, I, like I said, like, I totally understand your position, like, I've been to weddings here, like, I've been married on the beach.
Right.
Many of my friends are married on the beach.
I think we're all equally frustrated, and I hope I can find a solution.
Got other people to talk. So did you want to say something?
Yeah, hi.
Hi.
Uh, first off, big fan, small business, backed on of this country. Love everything that you guys do. I do believe that your industry, out of all the industries in Hawaii, especially the tourism related ones. Is generally the least impactful, the, one of the largest tax havens that we find and collect. So thank you guys for what you guys do for the state. Uh, on the other hand, though, I understand exactly, uh, what these residents are concerned about, are dealing with every day. You know, the Maslow hierarchy of needs, housing is one of the top, because it's, that's your home. And when you guys feel unsafe and unwelcome, and you can't step up front of your home. Um, I've lived in the house before where I didn't feel safe there, just going outside. It kind of sounds like you guys are sort of experiencing something the same. Um, and so, uh, as we approach this and try and find a good solution for everybody involved, I think that it's important to remember sort of. Every day they're waking up and they step outside, and this is kind of what's going on with them.
Right.
Uh, however, love your industry, love the taxes that you guys make. Um, I have.
A lot of taxes.
You guys pay a lot of taxes, there's a lot of taxes to be paid by all of us.
Yeah.
Where's that money go? Um, but so I understand the importance that your industry has here. Um, as somebody who's lived in Kahala my entire life, um, I have noticed the velocity and uptrending velocity. Of rude encounters of litter left on the beach after shoots. They'll abandon these things on the beach there. Um, the video game industry in the United States is one of the best self regulating industries on the planet. Uh, all of their, uh, the ages that you have to be to purchase a game, they privatized that, they made that themselves. And they were so on top of it from the beginning, that the government didn't feel the need to come in and get involved in their industry. Um, this might be a good opportunity for you guys to queer up as, as a collective and kind of draw the lines. What are we willing to put up with, what are we not? What are we allowing to, you know, maybe even a secondary signature from you guys to verify the permit for the people coming through? If they're not in good standing with your organization, Realtors do this all the time, the National Association of Realtors, uh, the Hawaii Association of Realtors. They get the final signature off on whether you're a licensed Realtor, why not a licensed wedding photographer? Um, and then also I want to point out too, that I believe that this problem is only going to get bigger. The technology that your industry utilizes to produce money and to go through, it's only becoming cheaper every day. Um, same things that you were shooting with five years ago, I have in my phone now. Um, and so as price comes down due to availability of technology and low cost of entry. You'll find more wedding photographers and we'll have this sort of race to the bottom. Obviously, there will always be a luxury market, that's kind of what Hawaii is for. But as you did point out yourself, there are those young couples who can't afford weddings to come out and pay the full, you know, luxurious price tag that comes with a, a classic Hawaii wedding. Um, with the economy kind of going the way that it is, with the wealth, uh, the income gap spreading the way it is. We're going to see more and more less financially resourceful weddings occurring on beaches in Hawaii. And we will have more people being able to provide the services at a lower cost, which will then blow up the market. And we'll see more and more weddings every year than we have before. That is a concern to me, um, and I think that's a concern to them as well. Um, part of what makes paradise paradise is that you get to enjoy it to yourself for a second. Um, and that is part of what you guys offer, that angle on the camera, that it's just them on the beach, they're having their perfect moment.
Right.
And so if we can sort of, uh, if you can address these concerns, if you can sort of help provide an immediate relief for them right now. Because every day tomorrow, they will wake up, this problem will still be here. If we can sort of figure out a way that satisfies your industry, keeps the bad actors out, because that's only gonna make you look bad and give you guys more of a headache. But also immediately deal with the solution, even if it's just temporarily saying, okay. We will only license or authorize one out of every five weddings here at this location, spread it out a little bit. Give them an olive branch, and they might be willing to give you one back. And also, it's much easier to talk to Tommy Waters and everybody else, when you have that golden backpack that you just, you did something.
Right.
You, you were the first person to do it.
All right, good. Thank you, Christian.
Thank you.
And, uh, okay, now, uh, sir, the, um, impatient, uh, president.
I, I had, I had a couple of questions.
Uh, did you have your questions answered? Pedro would like to go. Uh, no, oh, Pedro, you had something to say?
Yeah, I had, I had questions, thank you. Um, so can you, can you walk me through? And, and I appreciate all of the comments from all of my, all of my, of fellow council members. But I, I, I want to understand the situation a little bit more. How, when you say you're working with, how, how is that? What is that process? Is there, is there a committee? Is there a, like, who, who is looking at this and in what capacity?
I'm sorry, could you ask that question one more time? It did, I don't think I understood the question, I'm sorry.
You've mentioned a couple of times, we're working with, you know, D L N R, or give us some time to work this. What does that look like? Is that a, a one to one conversation? Is there a committee? Is there a working group?
Yep, okay, so basically, so we have our Oahu Wedding Association, I am the current president. Um, and then within our board, we have a, a political action committee. So there are about six of us, I think, and so we meet every other week. And again, our goal is to work through, so in our meetings, we kind of talk through, here are the concerns that we have, here's what we're trying to work through. We do have a lobbyist to kind of help guide us. Um, I think what we happened, what, what happened in the past is we were just kind of going at it, and it was again, a very like. This is not fair, we don't like that you're hurting us. And I think, you know, about a year, less than a year ago, we hired a lobbyist, and for us, it's a, how do we be better at, at working with the community? Versus again, working against everyone and just saying, poor us. Because again, for a while, especially during COVID, it really was a poor us, right? We had no businesses, we had no money, we had everything, it was hard for everyone. And I think I took presidency last year, and that's when, for me, I just, I wanted to shift the mindset of our organization, shift the mindset of our community. And I'm a big believer, again, I grew up here, I was raised here, I lived in Huaikai my whole life. I'm like, I want to figure out how to work together with us versus against the neighborhoods. Because again, for me, growing up in Huaikai, doing my photos in Waianalo, you know, going to the beach in that area, like, I don't want this for my family, for myself either. So it is a long process, but again, so the we would be myself as the political action chair. And about five or six other members, and our members range from photographers to, um. A, a videographer, another wedding planner. So basically, we have a range of people, there's a DJ. Um, so again, for us, it's all how do we work together? And how do we work with the community? How do we work with the, the city and the state to try to find a solution? And I, you know, I wish, I wish we could do it faster.
Yeah, and so may I offer a, a suggestion in the vein of, of my two colleagues who were talking about, you know, what can we do now? Um, I would suggest it because you do have the resources to be able to bring in a lobbyist who have, will give you the access to those lawmakers. Whereas the, the, the residents that are sitting right there don't have that type of pool. And are sort of pulling out their hair, figuring out, who do we go to to get this fixed? In creating a conjunction of a group that brings in residents, that brings in, you know, I'm sure at least one of us, uh, probably Colin, would be more than happy to. Participate in that discussion, um, that brings in the lawmakers and then brings in the industry to be able to discuss. Um, who, what exactly, like, let's measure that impact, what does it feel like to live there and to do that? Because I think that it's, that once those conversations are had, you know, with the lobbyists directly to lawmakers, I think that's where you get these sort of bills. That sometimes may not take into account, you know, some of the things that you brought up yourself about, you know, should we, should we have, uh, considered these other types of things? Um, as well, so maybe that might be an action that could happen, you know, very quickly. And you'll have access to some residents right there that I'm sure would be happy to be able to, to talk to, um, to folks.
I love that idea, you know, and I think what we learned in the past with Waianalo, and this was before I was the president, before I was even on the board. Again, it was a very us against them, I think the, the residents in Waianalo were very passionate. And I do, I personally don't think we took the right approach in how to work with them. So I would be, like I said, we have our committee, I would love to work with the board, I'd love to work with residents to, again, find a solution for everyone, not just us, not just you, everybody. So a hundred percent.
All right, now, I, I know there were residents that wanted to talk, who came from, uh, the Kahala Beach condos. Uh, who is the gentleman who wanted to?
Ron, Ron is here, Ron Green.
So please go ahead now, okay?
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed your name at the onset, ma'am.
Oh, Tessa.
Tessa, Tessa, thanks to see you.
Okay, um, I would like to ask the question of you. What is a Wiki permit and what does it provide for you?
So the Wiki permit, it's a state approved permit through the D L N R, and it allows us to do a wedding. On the beaches that are state owned, up to twenty five people, and it allows you to have a simple ceremony. So no bells and whistles, no crazy setups, a simple wedding unless people need a special, you know, if they need a chair, if they need to sit, any sort of special accommodations. Um, if you go on the Wiki permit website, it clearly states what you can and cannot do. But that's for state, not city and county.
What does it, what does it say you can do and you can't do?
So that would be the beach in front of the Kahala Beach condos, okay? Yeah, that would be the beach of the sand in front of the Kahala Beach condos, just so you know.
I know, I know, I'm asking Kathy, Catherine, I missed her name. I'm asking, what, what does the permit allow you to do?
So to, you can do a wedding up to twenty five. And again, you can, you can have a simple ceremony, simple setup with, you can have flowers, you can have some simple, again, if you need special accommodations, you can do that. But you can't do an arch, you can't do big setups, you can't.
Okay, okay.
And they're not.
And where can you do that at?
Where can you do what? Sorry.
Where can you have that wedding?
The event, where can you have the event, the wedding or whatever?
Like the simple ones? So any, with a Wiki permit, anywhere that you get permitted for. So the way that we could permit is, is you click on a beach, um, a state beach, so.
I'm asking you, where can you do it? I don't need to know, you, you've arrived at a beach.
You can do it on Kahala Beach, for example.
High watermark down the ocean, from the high watermark. And as per a D L N R agent that we just spoke with, hi, I'm a, a wedding vendor. Um, I just spoke with a D L N R agent last week. He verified that in front of the Kahala Beach condos, the green grass area is included up in the high watermark area, not.
It's not, no, it's not.
For some.
It's not, and that's the problem. No one, no one has, everyone is changing the written laws, okay? I have them right in front of me, and it clearly says, okay. It clearly says, permittees should be in the permitted shoreline area if they place themselves Mackay or seaward of the vegetation and debris line. You see, your, 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 your photographers, your, your associates are ignoring that, okay? It also says, no apparatus, no signs, no billboards, no, uh, uh, arch. It also says, no apparatus, no signs, no billboards, no archways, no generators. Every day we put up with that on our grass, okay? So they're where they're not supposed to be. And they bring all of this crap, big letters, marry me, okay? Lights, generators. Your people are not reading, they don't understand the Wiki permit.
Yes, Ron.
I have met with, with the Department of Land and they go, that's not right. I go, I know it's not right. I've sent them photos and they're going to start enforcing, okay? And they're going to enforce with, with fines, both civil and, and fellow, and criminal. And
Perfect.
So as, as the leader of this group, I, I don't, I just don't think you're getting through to, to your constituents, okay?
Well, so I want to be clear. Sorry, can I say one more thing?
Well, I was just going to say, that's an enforcement problem. So I mean, it's an enforcement problem, but DLNR is not enforcing their rules. So I think.
Ask me, find out who they are. I have requested, like, I know there are people that are doing these huge proposals. I've reached out to them. I know who they are and I've reached out and asked to meet with them, to let them know. Because again, for me, part of it is, do I want to give them the benefit of the doubt to know, maybe they don't realize they're doing something wrong? Before I, I start, you know, yelling at them. My next step is to let them know, like, this is not okay, right? It is, we don't want to be those people. I, I believe strongly in, in following the rules and doing it the right way.
We invite you to come to this beach tomorrow, or the first sunny day we have. Come, come every day for a week. Okay, and you'll understand that the, the issue is that your, your, your people are not following the rules. So, you know, all these discussions you want to have with city officials and state officials, I would just ask you, are your people following the rules? They're not?
And so, and so on that note, Ron, as Tessa has mentioned, we are most definitely those of us who have our GE tax license, our business licenses. We pull DLNR permits. Like I said, that, that was a genuine conversation with a DLNR agent last week. But yes, Ron, I'm thinking that everybody's information is different. Here's the thing, I am on the beach very frequently, following the rules to what I'm told. However, unfortunately, yes, there are companies unaware, not reading, and we are trying to educate them in the best way that we can.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
It's Ron Green.
No, no, the, the woman, huh?
Catherine, I'm a wedding vendor on the beach.
All right, well, I think it's incumbent on everybody. You know, the association, the wedding association, the Kahala Beach condo association. I think everybody has to lobby with DLNR to enforce the rules, to get DLNR. I mean, they have, DLNR has park rangers. I mean, they do have a cadre of park rangers who are paid with our tax dollar. And they have to be told to come down to the beach and enforce the rules. You know, and, and we can do that. And well, I mean, we could, I mean, we can entertain at a subsequent meeting, a resolution asking, asking DLNR to enforce their rules. I mean, that's what, that's the least we can expect from the people. We pay their salaries with our tax dollars.
And I think we're all on the same page with that.
Yeah, I think we're all on the same page.
Yeah. Well, I just suggest that Catherine, as the head of the association,
It's Tessa.
That, that, that it's
Her name is Tessa.
Imperative, that you let, let your constituents know that they're, they're in violation.
And we do, so not only do we have, again, like, not all of these, so the ones that are illegal are not our members. With that said, I have personally reached out to them, to talk to them, explain the rules. We also made it very clear on our website too. So anyone who goes to our website, so we're doing everything we can to let them know, these are the rules, please follow them. We don't want to ruin it for everyone. But there are, no matter what we do, right, like you said, they're speeders, we're not going to stop them, they're going to speed till the end, right? But we're trying to mitigate and figure out how to at least know that we are doing everything we can to educate them. They cannot then say, oh, we didn't know, like, you know the rules. You're choosing not to follow them at that point.
Cheaters will always cheat. I mean, then people, yeah, people are, you know, yeah, who will want to make as much money as they can and then run away. But we have to really work on endorsement. Christian, you got it.
A quick solution. You already know the names of the bad players who are behaving like this. Provide it to them. One of you guys can get a TRO, Temporary Restraining Order against Set Photographer, especially if they've been aggressive and in your face, they've made you feel unsafe. That person will no longer be able to work at the beach in front of your property because you will be there, violation of the TRO. That provides immediate relief and gives us all a little bit of time to step back, uh, see what we can do to come up with the best common sense solution and then move forward from here. But an excellent olive branch to extend.
You, you folks came down, Kate, and I'm sorry, sir. Todd, if you would like to say anything, please, now's your, now's your time. Okay.
I have one, one question now, and it's, I've heard from two or three of you on the board, Wailea Beach Park, correct? Wailea, Wailea, I apologize, Wailea Beach Park. Yeah. And they say that that's the area. We're not, we're not part of the park.
Oh, that's city, right.
And so this is where all of this is coming down for us. You hardly see any weddings at the park. We have three people, two people that I know for sure that do weddings. Kelly Hua and Mike, and they do an outstanding job. They don't leave flowers, they don't leave fabric flowers, which we've really gotten on them because you can't, those don't, we have to pick them up. But everyone else seems to be falling apart on this. I mean, I walked out the other day and on the, the jetty that goes out where the little island is, there was a six-foot red heart erected there. It was like, my God, what are you doing? So I know she may, Tisha may want to do what's right, but no one is listening to it. The park, we're out there by ourselves, which is beautiful for us. But there are no, no police looking at dogs on, without leashes. The people that are climbing on the trees because they want this bikini shot to show that they're, you know, put it on their Instagram or whatever. That's what's doing the harm. Is that part of things that are going on? That's the sad part. That's the ones that are pushing people around and asking us to move so they can get a better shot. That's what irritates us. And you've got two, like I said, two professionals that are doing a fabulous job and are doing it right and respectful. And we're just having a lot of trouble with the rest.
I know. I mean, enforcement is the issue. You know, we've got two tents on the beach now, permanent residents. And they're not from Hawaii. I mean, they are what I call the snowbird homeless. They're obviously from the mainland and they had one tent. You've probably seen it. It's about 25 yards west of Wailea Beach. And now there are two tents, kind of like a tent city is developing. And I call the police and I ask them, please, get rid of those illegal tents. And they talked to them. But the city is not doing what they're supposed to do. And remove the people who are living on tents illegally from the beach. You know, so it's frustrating. But we really have to call the city, call the police, call DLNR, write letters to the editor and let them know that there are some people out here who want the people who we are paying their salaries to do their job and protect us. So if we can all get together and accomplish this, that would be a good thing. Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anybody who is climbing? We do have another 15, 20 minutes. Who's that? Okay, Ron, yeah, please go ahead.
This is actually, this is actually Lisa, I'm Ron's wife. And I just wanted to say, you know, the Wiki rules are very, very clear. And it is our homeowners association that maintains that grass. So whether it's our property or the state property or the city property, we're maintaining it. And the problem I don't think is the weddings, it is the photographers. And a very simple solution for Tess or Tessa would be to have ID tags or little signs that they put in the ground with a QR code that linked to their Wiki permit. So we as residents could scan it or they'd have a badge that we can see. Because everyone you approach out there, and Kate will attest to this, is that every one of them says, oh, it's not me, I've got a license, it's everybody else. Just as Tess stood up there and said, it's, you know, we hear that all day, every day. So we need them to ban fake flowers. I collected two big black trash bags in one weekend of fake flowers. And everybody says, oh, those aren't my fake flowers. I always pick up after myself and I believe them that they do. The problem is that it's windy out here and fake flowers, you use them over and over again and they start falling apart. So, you know, if we really, really care about this island that we are blessed to live on, we should have a ban on fake flowers, particularly on our beach. Kate was talking about the big red heart that was out on the island here. They had a generator going for five hours. The Wiki permit is for maximum of two hours. They had a generator going for five hours. It's just, it's out of control. And I think a really simple solution would be to make sure that they understand what their permits say and to give them some sort of a tag or a little sign that they could post in the ground while they're doing their photographs that gives us the residents the information on their permit, so we know if they're legitimate or not. That's all I wanted to say.
So one more suggestion. I think that there's been a lot of suggestions. It would be wonderful, Tessa, if the, your organization would also be able to create some sort of printed material that, that could be provided to, you know, condos, to interested people that, that say, if you spot somebody who are doing these things that they're not supposed to be doing, hand them this, which spells out from our own organization, what they can and cannot, should not be doing. It's a, you know, a little tiny bit of a bandaid, but I think that it would help clarify that everybody is on the same side. Everybody wants those bad actors to not be there.
Pedro, we try to hand them out the Wiki permit, you know, rules, the, the, what you need to know when you get your permit. And they, you know, throw it in our faces, they throw it on the ground, you know, it just becomes trash.
Okay.
Okay, all right, well, this has been a, did you, yeah, just.
Really quickly. I'm actually, I was an artist too and photographer architect, but, so I'm, and, and I'm, I'm very much for small business. But backing up, I mean, where we are now, it's because we've had issues. We've had our residents clashing with people trying to work. Going back even further, and I will study this more because it's pretty fresh for me. Why is it that Waianaealo was able to get their area banned? Why was Lani Kai? Is there some sort of formula that the NLR or the state and city are using to decide? Whether it's density of residents versus hotels, whether it's parking spaces and maybe even measuring the width of, of the beaches. Can the shorelines actually take that many people? I agree that it's not always because of the wedding events, but the photographers and the drones that come through. I mean, if we have, let's say, 50 feet from our sidewalk to the edge, then you have the erosion and then the water. I mean, that's the only part that's really usable. Now, if you measure that to our residents, we have 200 apartments, so we'll say 400 people. And we're all vying for that little spot, you know, so I'm just wondering too, like, was there a special formula that these agencies came up with that allowed a ban on these areas? Because I would say for, in, in, just in front of our area, there's definitely an issue with the size of the, of our beach. And then, you know, again, Kahala Resort is much bigger. But then there's a parking issue where people have to pay for guest parking. Wailea Beach Park, they have parking. So why don't, you know, is there like a formula that they could come up with to decide this part of the beach you can, instead of just doing a blanket Wailea Beach? You know, is there a way that they, there's a way that we can present to the other agencies to create a formula that, you know, you have enough parking to allow commercial vendors to come and the visitors? Is it next to a condominium that happens to be fronting that beach where you have 400 residents? You know, vying for the small, small area. And then similar to Honolulu Bay, limiting the amount of visitors because it had wear and tear on the, on the reefs and the fish. That could be said for our shorelines too. So I just wanted to bring that up. If there's a way to come up with a formula to be able to issue permits. Thank you.
Call me when, okay. So one thing that they had talked about in the, the previous resolution that we met with Director Thielen and the mayor was, again, how do you measure? And it was by parking spaces. So they were looking at the different parks and beaches. So there's, and it was tricky because some of like the ones literally like, you know, I used, I grew up in for a while in Alava Heights. And there's like a park and there's literally no parking, but you, you're, you're not driving there, you're walking there. So it was a struggle where they were like, okay, parking is something that they could kind of manage and say, okay, if it's a bigger parking space, bigger parking lot, maybe we can allow more people, but it, it couldn't play out for like the more internal residents. So that's where they struggled because again, they were trying to find one rule for every park and that's where they were struggling. So again, I think, like I said, going back, I think what they were doing is they're, they're taking it and they're piecing it into three. They're working on tour buses. So again, just limiting or figuring out how to manage tour buses. There was something else, which I'm sorry, I don't remember. And then there was the commercial film. But again, they were kind of looking at, what is that metric? Is it, is it parking spaces, right? Is it the size of the park? Is it the density of the area? And I think that's where they're trying to struggle to figure out what makes the most sense. For them, just like everyone else, like the ban is the easiest, but I just, I still in my heart feel like that's not the best solution for everyone. So there was taco parking.
All right, well, we only have about 10 more minutes and then we have to close the meeting. We should close the meeting down. So we're going to keep this on the agenda, okay? I know the last few meetings, I don't think the Kahala condo beach members came. I'm glad, glad you came for this meeting. But, you know, bear in mind, the Waianaealo and the Kailua bans came because of incredible amount of commercial activity that existed on those beaches. And I think the, you know, the residents just had enough and the, their, their city council people, you know, backed them up and passed the ordinances, et cetera. The problem on Kahala Beach, I don't know. I mean, it hasn't, you know, it's probably spiraled up because of, you know, the bans on Kailua and Waianaealo Beach. You know, so I think that there has to be a decision. I mean, we can, you know, down the road, we can pass a resolution with bans or we can pass a resolution asking for, you know, enforcement and, and better use of, you know, the existing rules. But I think the residents and, you know, Tess and your organization has to kind of figure out, you know, what's the best solution and whether the neighborhood, neighborhood board can help. We are, you know, we are representing the residents, the neighborhood. So I think we are certainly willing to help. If you folks, you know, can get together with an appropriate resolution that we can pass and send over to Chair Waters. He is our city council member. You know, it is a city problem or over to DLNR, I mean, Governor Green, who has control of the DLNR. So, but it's, it is a complicated situation. We'll keep it on the agenda. And Tessa, if you do come up with, you know, proposed rules, let us know. And if they're, if they're going to help us, we can back you up, okay? So a complicated situation. We'll keep it on the agenda and we'll try to use our best efforts and the best minds of our community and our board members to assist. Okay? Okay? All right, but, but a very, uh, very good informative discussion. Thank you all for participating. Okay. All right. So now um, I think we're pretty much finished. Um, there's nobody from the Board of Water Supply on the Honolulu watershed management.
Actually, I'm here.
Huh?
I, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm participating remotely. I'm very busy. Hello.
Okay, please go ahead. Okay.
In the interest of time, um, you know, we presented our East Honolulu Watershed Management Plan to the neighborhood board. I can throw up a couple of slides, but um, we're here to ask for your support of the plan. Um, we were, I was here last month and uh I think there was uh miscommunication on the, the draft resolution that you folks would consider. And I did email that to uh, the board members that had emails on the website. So how would you like to proceed? Um, I, I can throw up a, a few slides if you want.
Okay, so I've been told that by uh my hair ups again. Um, we honestly, if you guys just want to support uh, support uh Board of Water Supply, you can't just go and just make a motion just to support it. You don't need like a letter or anything. Yeah, you don't need a resolution. No, that's what they told me at this point because he had it on for a while and he did present. So it, so if you guys just want to make, one of you can make a motion and yes.
Make a motion. Yeah, go ahead.
Just to let you know, I did make a um modification to the resolution. Just acknowledging that that plan does not cover our whole district.
Yeah, no, it splits our district in half. And I, I know it varies the last time that it was a, a line that was drawn that he doesn't understand how it is, but I don't understand how that line is. And it definitely splits the Apua in half. Just like you said, it's the Apua model. It splits our Apua in half, our district's Apua. It's very confusing.
Yeah, I think this line here, if you can see my map, it follows the stream. So it's not the, it's not the whole watershed, but that is the land use district.
I, I guess why can't it become more cohesive and, and actually, I mean, like, that's the stance of the Apua model and that's the stance of your, your uh, your, your watershed plan, yet you're cutting our district's Apua in half.
Um, the Wailai Nui, yeah. But, you know, the, the, the important piece is the, you know, the areas. I mean, it's, it's captured in the, in the adjacent watershed plan, but the, the strategies and, and the forest management practices, you know, they, they, they still, you know, focusing on the Malka watershed. So um, unfortunately, I don't think I can, I can't change the boundary, but um, know that.
Why can't you change the boundary?
This is adopted by the general plan and it takes council action.
Uh, Colin, I, I think this is related to the East Honolulu Development Plan and with that line that we were talking about, it's not.
That's correct. It's the same boundary.
Yeah.
But, but it's, it's not like we, 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 um, you know, avoiding or um, will not have manager practices that would apply to Wailai Nui Valley. We do, so. Apologize for that. That's what we were able to find out.
No, all right. So are we ready to do something? I mean, I, perhaps uh we should uh. Yeah, postpone it for the next meeting? Yeah, I, I guess we'll have to postpone it to the next meeting. I wasn't at the last meeting, so I'm, I'm not really uh Akamai on, on the confusion, but if.
Could we clarify before, before he leaves? Because I think this is your third time attending? Yes. And, and it has been continually postponed. So I, could we clarify what is the process that he has to engage in to get the action that he would like to have?
Well, um, I guess Anson checked and uh we just have to make a motion and have it seconded. And then we have a vote on whether to support the uh East Honolulu Watershed Management Plan. They seek endorsement, so.
Yeah. So why, why are we postponing it?
Well, nobody has yet. Uh, Pedro, you want to make a motion to support it? Uh, you know, please.
I mean, I'll make a motion. It can be voted up or down.
Okay.
And I think that, that, that at least will give you an answer.
Okay, is there a second?
Sure.
Okay, Peter seconds it. All right, let's have a vote then. Yeah. So all those in favor of endorsing the plan, um, raise your hands. Okay, I guess I'll endorse it. I, or I guess we can do a um, a roll call, I guess, and. Okay, all right, Anson, lead the roll call.
Okay, uh, this motion is in support of the East Honolulu Watershed Management Plan. Uh, when I say your name, please say yes, no, or abstain. Uh, Christian?
Abstain.
Okay, uh, Peter? Okay, uh, Colin? Call abstain. Okay, uh, uh, Pedro?
Uh, abstain.
Okay, Yamato? Okay, uh, Rich?
Yes.
Okay, Brian?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and Lee? Okay, that's only four, yay, uh, zero, no, and four abstain. This does not pass.
All right, well, I guess um, what, should we keep it on the agenda and get some more clarification? Uh? Oh, is that right, Anson?
Uh, yes.
Okay, all right, so. Okay, um, all right, so it doesn't pass. Okay, um, so sorry.
Well, thank you, thank you for, uh, please taking the vote. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll note that in the minutes and then, um, but I think we're going to go ahead with our, um, you know, we have to go ahead with our approval process. But, but thank you. And if you put it on the agenda again, I'll be back.
Okay, but at this point, I, okay, so, all right, thank you.
I, I really do commend you, Barry. I, I appreciate you showing up and, and supporting it and, and doing it. So I think you did a great job. Unfortunately, it just doesn't cover our district.
Okay, all right, okay.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. And I, I, I love your, your uh screen uh, you know, screen decoration. It's beautiful. All right. So now we get to unfinished business. Primary urban center development plan moved to East Honolulu region. I don't think we have any more information on that. That has to come from Chair Waters' office. Um, and we don't have his representative here. Uh, danger fires.
Just to share, um, Chair Waters' newsletter uh has some information that was printed in there related to this topic.
And Brian, did you, can you summarize?
Quick glance was um, uh, as I understood through reading it, um, Chair Waters uh did not want to have the primary uh, what is the primary urban center development? Um, heights of buildings, that sort of thing to come into Kahala. That's the general just that.
That's what he told us, yeah. Okay. So we hope that he can get that in the plan and enforce it. That would be great. Uh, being the danger of fires and Diamond Head caused by illegal campers and other causes. I have not been able to get anybody from DLNR to come. They did call me up and I followed up. They said so and so, so and so, and I followed up. I, you know, they're, you know, they're just not responding, but I think uh we do have Captain Schubert from the Fire Department who says he'll report. And let's face it, it's the Fire Department's fully on it. So, you know, let's, it's, it's a real concern. I know a lot of Diamond Head residents have expressed to me their concern about the fire season happening and the you know, God forbid, we could have a tragedy here. So we keep that on the agenda. It's really a life and death issue. Uh, proposed demolition of Shangri-La Breakwater. Um, I guess we'll keep it on the agenda, but nothing new there. So the next regular announcements, the next regular board meeting is scheduled.
Rich, for, for the, for the Shangri-La Board, like, uh, what, what are we, I guess, what are we discussing on that? Because I mean, I'm, I'm down to motion to, to, to not dismantle it.
Oh, the Shangri-La?
Yeah, I mean, like, I guess what are we waiting for? What, what are we waiting for? Why are we holding off on that?
Oh, well, we have um, you know, the uh, it's a complicated issue, you know, DLNR uh has been pushing it, even though they voted against it twice. Shangri-La people, business people, they want it this, this, and they think it's going to help them avoid liability in the, you know, potential liability in the future.
That was the DLNR because the DLNR now owns it. They don't want the liability for it.
Yeah, now they don't want the liability. They want to demolish it. Um, but there's a lot of um, you know, there, there's a lot of opposition to it. Twice this board, I mean, just a little bit.
I mean, I guess, why are we maintaining to keep it on?
Well, because every so often it pops up.
I mean, I, we've, we've voted on it twice, my tenure here.
Okay, well, we can take it off.
Unless, unless we, do we want to go on it again or something? I guess what is more to discuss about it at this point?
Yeah, yeah. Well, they can bring, it's really what's happening in, what's the imagination?
Should we, should we motion to, to vote on our, our opinion of whether or not the, the, the breakwater should be dismantled at Shangri-La? Is that, was that what we're, because that's the intent of what having it on the agenda is, is that we're going to eventually put on a motion to do it? Is that what more discussion do we need to have or what, what are we waiting for to, to, to resolve this?
Activity, I, I cannot, it's, it's like, it's beyond my uh, you know, my Gothic uh mind, you know, to figure out what the next step is with the DLNR. I mean, there's votes, it comes up. Um.
I, I mean, I think we continue to support the non-dismantling of it. And, and I mean, I think our, our, we do have new board members since then, but I'm, I'm down to motion for it right now again. Like, I motion to oppose dismantling
All right.
of the Shangri-La Breakwater.
All right, do we have a second?
Yeah.
We got a second on that. Let's take a vote and we can send it out to the DLNR.
Say, say the verbiage.
Get it done, you know, app.
I, I oppose. I, I'd like to motion to oppose the dismantling of the Shangri-La Breakwater.
Okay, second, Christian?
Yep.
Period. Okay, Anson, can you do a roll call?
Uh, Christian?
Yay.
Uh, Peter? Uh, Colin? Pedro?
Yes.
Okay, Sylvia? Uh, Turbin?
Yes.
Wong? Uh, and Lee? Okay, it passes.
Was that seven? Was that seven?
Yep, there was uh, seven.
Okay, I'll, I'll do a letter. I'll do a letter.
Oh, eight. Never mind. There's eight. Sorry.
So we got eight in favor. Great. Okay, I'll do a letter and we'll get it out to the uh, to the people who um, uh, you know, to the usual suspects. Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, Colin, all right, thank you for um, uh, your proactive uh, you know, your, your proactivity on this issue. Okay, so now the last thing we have to decide, um, do we, okay, so Anson mentioned to me that we are permitted to do, uh, have three recesses a year. So we, we're recessing, uh, well, we already recessed this year for December, uh, you know, the Christmas season. And uh, normally we recess uh one time during the summer. I think generally we've been recessing August. Uh, we could, if we, if the board so approves.
I'd like to propose July.
Okay, July?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so just uh, that's just July, uh, not June or not August.
July and August.
You want to do both July and August? What's that?
I'm not getting one.
What's that? All right, let's go down the line. Okay, so Colin, you?
I won't be.
I will not be in attendance in July, whether we have recess or not, so.
Okay, okay.
Just to put that out there.
Fair enough. Okay, so you say.
I'll, I'll be on a family vacation.
Okay, so Colin.
Not like Brian that phones in on the calendar. His dedication is great.
But keep the meeting June and August.
I, I am on a, on, whatever. If you guys want to support something else, I'm going to say July.
July and August.
Okay. Lee, what do you, July and August? Ryan?
July and August. And I was saying, we're still kicking December as well.
Well, no, I. Our recess would be July, August, and December. We keep, July and December for sure.
Okay, Anson, all right.
I vote for July and December.
Anson, we, do we, we need to do um, do we have an election? And no, we don't have an election this year, right? But we still have to elect officers for the year. Yeah, okay. And we do that generally in July, right? Can we do that in June? What's that? So ask. Okay, but if we're not meeting, we don't have to have officers. Okay. Um, but Brian, how do you feel? I mean, what's your? July and August. What about you? Huh?
Yeah.
July, August, and December. Okay.
What about Sylvia?
All right, now let's think. We're going to meet in June, okay? We're going to meet in June. I think we have a general consensus, July will recess. And then in June, let's decide whether we're going to recess in August too, okay? How's that? All right, okay.
I, I motion that we will adopt recess in July and December.
All right, July and December. Okay. Do we have a second?
We can adopt it or amend it and.
Okay, we have a second on that. All those in favor of recesses in July and December, raise your hand. And then, right now, okay, okay, just to have some. We got to make decisions, so I'm tired of making decisions. And you don't want the chair to make the decisions for the whole, you know, for the whole membership, you know, so this is better. Okay, so we have gone over about seven or eight minutes, so we will adjourn the meeting.
One addition, Rich, uh, bike box is no longer with the state.
What's that?
Bike box is no longer with the state.
Oh. Oh, they're working. Oh, thank you. Well, maybe ask them, here, if you got.